I like to take people to Trail to the Line.
Yeah, that's a four service.
And you're not far from my house, right?
Oh, and it's got two slides. Sure your house will be cheap with a little bit of charge for Trail to the Line?
I don't know how many slides. I'll find out and just be a hair chief on you.
Yeah, we get forty-two hundred, but... That's after giving much weight. I'm not sure.
No, it's about two hundred. It's a point, so we have to work with them. I think they're probably looking more retention than bill short. Yeah, I think about five minutes. Before we start meeting in a bad thing. So I don't think we're going to show radiation.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Father, we come to you right now, we want to just give you praise, God, for who you are and what you do for us, Lord. It's just a beautiful place to live in this part of the state, Lord, and it's just a wonderful life that you've given us, God. And I just thank you so much. I ask that you be with the meeting, God, give us wisdom that can only come from you, Lord, and I just ask that you be with us. And, Lord, most of all, we thank you for your son that came and died so that we might have salvation and eternal life, God. Right now, we just ask you to lay your hand upon us and be with us, we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I'll call the meeting over and prepare the duty of the whole call. Commissioner Feller?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Toller?
Here.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir. That was his first, thanks, watch.
First thing on the agenda is the annual reorganization of Union County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to County Director Terry Parker. At this time, we will take nominations for chairman of the county commissioners. Do I have any nominations?
Bobby Toller. Junior. Right?
Yes. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other nominations? Quite this time, we will vote yea or nay. Commissioner Feller?
Yea.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Toller's elected as chairman for the next year, and I'll turn the meeting back over to him. Thank you. For your support. At this time, I'll open up nominations for vice chairman.
Nominate Max Miller.
Second. Any other nominations? Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes on the previous meeting?
Yes.
Do you think so?
Yeah.
There were no...
Oh. Yes, yeah, I do.
It wasn't a long before you received last night. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes.
Room was ready.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is Billy. Congratulations. We just got one bill from this morning, it's for Emily Hartzock, 0528-03930, for a shed previously sub divested area from a floodplain issued, recommend for approval. This is the county board.
I make a motion here to approve it from you.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Since you're here, let's do the resolution. Set this out.
Okay. Alex's benefit, I'm going to explain this a little bit. Union County participates in the state county engineering program, and the county engineer's salary is set by I.D.O.T., they give a guidance, and the county, and they will, if the county pays at least that amount, the state will reimburse half of the county engineer's salary. Okay? And then the other half of the salary is paid from the motor fuel tax allotments to the county. Pretty clear? Okay. And we have to, once, I'm in a six-year appointment, okay, I'm in the third year of that appointment, I have three years left. And once a year, we have to set the salary by resolution, so that's what we're doing right now. And the resolution reads, and Tyler's drafted this and may all change this for us. Resolution says the salary of the county engineers, whereas the county has sufficient surface transportation program funds available and desires to use a portion of said funds to pay a portion of the county engineer's salary, and whereas the county desires to appropriate funds for the purpose of payment of the county engineer's salary and expenses beginning December 1st, 2017, ending November 30th, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of commissioners and county union as follows. Appropriate from the county share of motor field tax funds, the sum of $107,372.75 for salary, and $5,000 for expenses, and the sum of $8,220 for the payment of the county engineer's health insurance. A side note here for Alex's benefit again, I don't take the health insurance because my wife is a state employee and I'm on her program, so there's no cost accounted for my health insurance. Said appropriation includes $120,592.75 for the county motor field tax funds, that's just an accumulation of all three of those numbers. Now therefore, be it therefore resolved, the county hereby authorizes the sum of $53,686.37 of their surface transportation program funds to be made available to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the state's use in exchange for the equal amount of state funds, the state funds equal 50% of county engineer's salary, passed and approved by the board of commissioners. Any questions?
Yes, the eight two hundred is included in that, and then, but you don't take it?
But I don't take it, that's just in there, just in case something would happen, she'd lose her job, lose her health insurance, then the resolution's already been passed so that I can go back on the county's health insurance.
Okay, but that money is not given to you, that stays?
That stays in there.
Got it.
Same way with the $5,000 for expenses, I usually use a thousand of that for travel.
Okay, so it's just for budgeting purposes?
It's budgeting purposes.
Okay.
You might also fund the, you know, you do a lot of the engineering work.
Yes. Whenever I build one of these bridges, just like Savile Road, as you're talking about, the county, not only the state will reimburse my time, even though I'm on the county's dime and they're paying half of it, they reimburse 100% of my time for doing my own engineering. And so every time I build one of these jobs, I build the state for about $10,000. And when we did Skyline last year, I billed it for $30,000. And so me being in this position, not taking the health insurance, I actually made the county a profit last year on my engineering time. And so, and last year, what they had in my efforts was the gas and my vehicle. I'm a bargain.
Their payments come in on time for what you're building, for your time?
Yes. They, for some reason, they keep that money going. Last year, in all of their budget games, without the budget, they held my reimbursement for about four months, passed what they should have, but once they got the budget in place, then they reimbursed us. So they're not behind on any part of that.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. Okay. In motion now. The resolution said the salary of the county engineer.
Make a motion to pass the resolution on the salary of the county engineer.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Please, sir.
Let's go back to that point, the county finances.
Darren said he had a meeting this morning at nine o'clock in Cardinale, so he wouldn't be able to make it at the beginning of the month, so he doesn't have real accurate numbers yet, so he said he'll be at the next meeting and he'll have a presentation.
We don't have any time to discuss our old business under new business versus approval of bills. Does everyone have a chance to look at the bills?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is budget discussion.
Just an update on the budget, I've been working on it, had time a couple days this week to devote to the budget, got quite a bit done. Been trying to go back and look at all the funds that affect the general fund, make sure everything is reflecting how we needed to reflect for 2018. It looks like this year, we're going to come in with a surplus where we didn't spend all the money that we budgeted, which will help out a little bit for, you know, next year. We, I still need to get with Scott with regards to the capital, because we were looking into the lease option for patrol vehicles and find out how much that is. My best estimate for you right now is you're probably at about $100,000 deficit, including, which includes capital. So before, we were at that without capital, now it looks like you're right around hovering that same amount as with capital. So we're getting there. I'm ready to start again meeting with you guys, drilling down in it, and hopefully meeting with office holders next week if we can get those set up, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm fine. Yeah, the, is the deficit taken into account, the money from this year?
Yes.
The surplus?
Yes, you mean using that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just do a little words quick.
Yes, so we need to look at the capital, I just have everybody's request, you guys haven't said for sure what you're actually giving, so we need to revisit it, see this is what's been requested, and then versus what you guys actually want to approve, so.
Okay, and we're still looking at around $100,000?
Yeah, I think your capital right now is at $100,000.
Okay.
So you're looking for money for capital.
Okay, and...
And that's all the requests?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, the, are we, how are we feeling about all the bills that are coming in from last year's budget? Are we pretty well think we have all those?
No, we give the office holders 15 days in December, so they have about another week to submit any bills still for last fiscal year, so it just depends on...
Would you chink away at our surplus?
It will, it will. The good thing is right now, you, they can turn in bills for fiscal year 17, they can't buy anything for fiscal year 17.
Right.
In 18 now. So we did have some purchases right at the end of November, probably people having money left in their budget, or just so happens that that's when they needed office supplies. But there were some rather large purchases in November that did eat away a little bit at the surplus.
But at this point, we don't look for any large bills to come in, it just...
I wouldn't, I mean, no large purchases, because it can happen, I don't know what's outstanding bill wise, I wouldn't know.
Okay. I'm just trying to watch the surplus number to...
Yes.
Because that'll reflect. I want that to be as huge as we can.
Yes.
Good news.
And we did get the money from the circuit clerk for the child support, so that's all taken care of and that's in there, so we're away with that.
Okay, so where we're at is we will start meetings in subcommittees next week, and then definitely start talking to the office holders next week.
Yes.
I think that's good.
And last week, Max and I met with 911 also, we met with Crystal and Steve and Grant, and talked to them with regards to the amount they pay for dispatch, and the fact that they've been paying the same amount for 10 years, and they kind of just showed them what the true cost of our eight dispatchers are. And they were, they were open to the idea, they're revisiting their budget to see what they can do. They agreed with the number, it's just they're trying to figure out if they can fit it in the budget.
Yep, they only have so much to do.
But it was a positive meeting, I will say.
Yes, it was.
They were very open and understood what was going on, so.
Well, I guess the good part and the sad part of all this is numbers are numbers, numbers don't lie, it is what it is. Good or bad, however it might be. Well, it's good, though, I mean, we'll start next week and start, start taking care of business.
Next on the agenda, the university extension board. One of them, and I'm ready, but I think we have some questions that were brought up about that one.
Yeah. Ruby Lingel currently serves on our extension council, and state law requires that we have an extension board separate from our council. The way I explained it to Angie was, the extension council is like, you know, we do programs, we do education programs, and the council is like the advisory piece of extension to help us with programs. The extension board is like the advisory board on the finance side. They're the citizens that hold me accountable for the way that we spend tax dollars. And so the boards, we're to solicit the county boards to ask for you to appoint citizens to this extension board. In the past, I mean, I understand you gentlemen, I mean, this is a common, common request of you to always find people to put on boards, and it's not an easy task. So with Ruby being on the extension council, the programmatic side, we're asking that you would appoint her to the extension board. So, you know, her role as a volunteer is already being used, and honestly, what I do is, I'll schedule the board, extension board meeting in front of the council meeting, so then that way they're not having to have excess travel, and it just makes it more easier on everybody. So, so our recommendation is that Ruby be appointed to the extension board as Union County representative.
Jody, is there any conflict with that on both ends, or being on both ends of it?
No, because it's strictly advisory.
Okay.
There's no authorities that goes along with, I mean, I'm using them as a...
But I mean, she's not advisor herself in those positions?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to keep it straight.
Sure. No, it's a question.
I think we had some question about the length of the term.
Yeah, and the way our, the advisory on the programmatic side is two, two-year terms, and Ruby's is actually about to expire, but I suggest to Angie that we go ahead and make it two years, so then that way, two years from now, then we can bring another person before you and go at that point. So Ruby, if you don't know, she's a retired extension employee, resides in Cobb and Alto Pass area, and is recently put on Extension State Advisory Council too. So she's, she's taken on an even greater leadership within the extension as a citizen. So she's to be commended for all her volunteer work.
I know her, and I think she's been very good. I think we're just trying to tie down some dates here, you know.
So, yeah, if you make a two-year appointment, then that would be great.
Jody, is this, this is a multi-counting extension board?
Yeah.
Okay, so then there's one member appointed by each county?
Correct.
And yet it looks as though the term is really up to the boards.
Yeah.
I think a two-year term makes sense, makes sense to me.
Can you go for the next meeting? We can get prepared for the next meeting.
And that's fine, and really, all I need for my evidence is that it's in your four minutes, and then we use that as justification that we need to, that we're meeting the state requirements. Okay, so thank you for cooperation, if I can't have two more minutes of your time, one, I got the, your $40,000 for Union County, and I would really appreciate that, I got three counties the same day, so...
Those are wild.
Those are, those are good. In November, I participated in a FEMA sponsored program, and Dana come in, I talked to her in the end of the night. Dana, I'll share this with, have you heard about CERT programs, communities, emergency response training? And this is going to be geared specifically towards teenagers. And what my hope is, did anybody get brochure?
Yeah.
Angie, I'll be sending it to you. Oh, I thought that was Dana, I'm sorry. I apologize, that's a tremendous insult. What my hope is, is cooperation with Dana, that we can find some teenagers in Union County that would be interested in the program, because then what this does is, we know down here, there, you know, the next disaster is just waiting to happen. It's not if or but, it's when, and disasters come in tornadoes, it comes in ice storms, flooding, and so, you know, if we can have a few of our teenagers that are trained in disaster preparedness and assistance, then that would give Dana another set of volunteers that he could reach out to. So I know that we have some across the five counties that are already working with our volunteer fire departments, and so another, another piece of this is to give them an exploration of a career path. You know, we may find, they may find that they're interested in pursuing one of these areas, and, you know, that's where we can help them out too. So I give this, other than just to, you know, help, help support, if you know of a teenager between the age of 13 and 19, take this to them and say, hey, contact Jody, and let's see if we can get them on a good path to help the community, so.
Is Dana your liaison for deputy, I mean?
Yeah, and the reason why I want to include our ESDA coordinator, well, not just down here, I'm meeting with Jim Peany on Tuesday to let him know...
I mean, just for our county, I mean, you're...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because this is a great program.
Yeah, so the, I just, I, there's value for the ESDA coordinators, I didn't realize, but they're required to have three disaster simulations per year. That's one of the capstones of this program, is that the teenagers get to do a disaster simulation. So our ESDA coordinators, they can check that off their list, as well as help you participate in this, so.
Have you done any outreach?
Great idea.
Shawnee School?
To Shawnee? I know I don't.
The reason I ask that is because during the May flood, and every flood we've had down there, I refer to them as the way they're clay warriors, I mean, these kids come out of the woodwork, there's an army of.
Yeah.
And they're very community minded, very helpful, and I think...
I suspect some of them are probably FFA kids. Maybe? Because it seems to be, that's, that's the group that steps forward always, and especially in our flooding. So is it, is it Oaks, is that her name? Who's your FFA woman there down there?
No, she's not there anymore.
Oh, okay. So we have worked with Shawnee College, excuse me, Shawnee School District on some number of programs, so, but...
I think it's a great program, Jody.
Hey, it's not costing you anything, but I just want to make sure...
It's a great program.
...the services working for you guys, and we appreciate your support always.
You don't have any other questions?
Thank you, happy day.
Thank you, Jody. Terry, listen, I'd like to know when next meeting. I'm ready. Next on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing the Illinois bicentennial. Rob, would you like to give some information on that?
Yeah. The state is really trying to promote the fact that this is the start of the 200th year of Illinois as a state. That 199th birthday was actually on Sunday. A few municipalities in the state recognized that on Monday and had different flag raising ceremonies. Today, we are going to have ours at 11 o'clock, and we'd like to invite all the public to join us there. At that time, we'll be reading this proclamation, assuming it passes today, and this, this is just something that's recognizing that this is the Illinois bicentennial year, and encouraging the public to participate in different activities that the state's going to be sponsoring throughout that year.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the resolution? Have motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is the resolution appointing of Commissioner Union County Housing Authority Board. We have a recommendation from the Union County Housing Authority, and Angie would like to explain a little bit of, there's a vacancy that's been created.
Yes, that, one of their commissioners is now deceased, and so there is a vacancy on that board, so the housing authority took applications from, one of the requirements is one of the members of the board has to be a resident, so they actually have to reside there. So they took applications from residents that were interested.
So they took applications from residents that were interested. They reviewed them and they have recommended Norman Neal Poole to, to finish the rest of that term. The term expires on November the 7th, 2018. It's just to finish the remainder of the term.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, our lead as that board, like Angie said, we sent out notifications and we asked for people that were interested. We got them and then interviewed and interviewed other people also, you know, in reference to this person and this, this guy, he's one of the rost of the top. I support this. I support this nomination.
Any more discussion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, sir.
And the name is Norman Neal Poole.
Terry, do you want to do your report?
Got the monthly report for the county clerk's fees, total team. Alex, I normally give a report for fees every month, the commissioners of what county clerk office has taken in. Some of these fees actually go to the state, some of the rest of them go into the general fund or the automation funds. If you would like to come by sometime, I can explain to you which ones go where if you want to do that. Total monthly reports, $12,473.50. You have an extra page, this, this report, we have a year-to-date report, which is $146,050.50. And then the third page is what we collected for the fiscal year, $165,786.50. A lot of the, a lot of the things up here, I can go through this real quick for Mr. Feller's.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
The county general fund, it gets 50, out of the, I'm looking on the last, last page for fiscal year. The county general fund received $54,921. The revenue stamp fund, $40,195. The RHSP, which is a housing fund, which goes to the state, $19,314. The reporters automation fund, $15,600. Bible statistics automation fund, $1,396. Those are separate funds from the general fund, so those are kept separately from the general fund. Same with the next one, the GIS fund, $26,064. The state death fund, $26.72, that goes into the state also. Domestic violence fund, $750, that goes into the state. The marriage license fund, $3,000, that's the county's. That gives a total down here of $165,786. If anybody ever has any questions on that, they're welcome to tell me.
Alex, the first time I saw that, I saw the amount at the bottom and thought, man, this is good. We're, we're racking it in now.
Set it back out.
It doesn't work that way. We don't get that.
No chance we can offset payments to state with this, sir?
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is committee reports.
As far as my committee, I don't, but I will say, since we talked about the, the housing, the housing board, that, that runs very, very smooth. Their meetings are productive. I'm, I'm proud to be a part of that board. It does a great job.
We had a 911 meeting. Crystal, you. I don't know, we, we already talked.
Pretty well already talked about budgetary. Obviously, the board is, understands that the county board and the expenses with the telecommunicators, however, I hope the county board also understands we're very limited on our funds and similar to the county, we don't want to hit our reserves and drain us to nothing if we have a major emergency or equipment failure, the state decides to change what we get. So Grant, Steve and I did meet yesterday and went over our current budget and we're going to reconvene our meeting on Tuesday with the 911 board to discuss and see what they're, what they think. Hopefully, maybe we'll kind of have an answer for you on Tuesday once the board, once again.
I'll just say the food pantry truck will be in Monday at 12:30 in case anybody's had electric free time and will have a bunch of the truck. We usually get between five and six times and so it gives a pretty good workout.
I will say, I do want to commend you guys for doing that because it's very helpful. I talked to Miss Stairs on the, and it's, it's, it's a very, very good thing that pantry.
We, you know, there's seven counties in that and we have the best food pantry of any county.
Oh, no doubt.
By far.
And I will say that from, from that pantry, what we as the board have asked them to do to us, she does a very good job of recording back on the, on the senior citizen boxes and stuff like that. I think it's a very, very good thing.
The tourism board has canceled their meeting for the month of December, basically because there's nothing on the agenda. So the next meeting will be in January, Thursday in January, I think it's the 18th, I believe.
Is there any other business? Probably the next regular meeting, we'll be setting the dates for the next meetings for the coming year.